Questions regarding that? If not.
I would move to approve the CDBG drawdown number two in the amount of $8,367.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the CDBG drawdown number two in the amount of $8,367. Would you call for a vote, please?
Also, person Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Perry? Motion carried.
A SAC City facade project number two is consideration of approving the Frank's Design Group's bill in the amount of $13,114.80.
I'll make the motion to approve the Frank's bill in the amount of $13,114.80.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Frank's Design Group's bill in the amount of $13,114.80. Would you call for a vote, please?
Also, person Rooney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number four is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any this evening? If not, we will move on to item number five, license and permits. A is the renewal license for Crutchens Haymarket LLC doing business as SAC County Cattle Company, Class C liquor license with Sunday sales. Stacy, are you aware of any problems?
I'm not.
I'll make the motion to renew the license for Crutchens Haymarket LLC doing business as SAC County Cattle Company, Class C liquor license with Sunday sales.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve Crutchens Haymarket LLC doing business as SAC County Cattle Company, Class C liquor license with Sunday sales. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number six miscellaneous, A Ross and Denise Opsol to address the council regarding forgiveness on sewer bill. Ross, would you like to come up here and address the council?
During a cold snap this winter, we had a water line break in the barn on the back of our property that has no sewer. It's just a water line. It's been fine the last couple winters. This one was particularly cold. We had 50,000-plus gallons and a $1,000 water bill. My understanding is when something like that happens, we can come to the council for relief, and that's what we're doing.
I was out there and inspected it, and there was a hole about this big frozen popped out of a water pipe. And all of that water ran out under the door and into the field, and there couldn't have been any that went down any sewer.
The practice of the council in the past, if any of you are not familiar, if an individual's been able to prove that it didn't go into a sanitary sewer, the council has been going through the precedent of while they're not forgiving the water portion of the bill, in the case of the sanitary sewer portion, the council has had a practice of figuring out what the average use for a particular month would be due, and then offset the difference, forgive the difference between what the average bill was and what the actual bill was. One of the reasons you don't have that information, and always remind council members of this, it's actually illegal for us to share the information with you as far as what the details of the bill are.
Thank you.
Anyone ready to make a motion?
I would move to forgive the portion of the sanitary sewer bill that exceeds the monthly average for the last, for the typical months, last 12 months, what do we do?
12 months is typically.
For the last 12 months, and have that forgiven on the sewer bill of Ross and Denise Opsol.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to forgive the sewer part of their utility bill based on an average usage over the last 12 months. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Rooney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
B? Miscellaneous B is review of 2012-2013 fiscal year audit with Cornwell, Frieders, Mayor and Associates, PLC. And that is you.
Okay, brought copies with me today? What did you? Yeah, you already have those too. Okay, good. On the, you have copy?
Thank you.
Okay, so my office, and we came over for about three days in like February to go through the records.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
Warm weather.
Yeah, it wasn't too bad this year. All one. And then we came for about three days this year because it wasn't quite as long as other years because there wasn't a single audit. A single audit is we had to spend more than $500,000 of federal funds in one year, so then we had to do some extra checks. But next year might be a different story. So we came for about three days, and then we did a little one, and then we went back in November where our office put together that annual financial report that we published in the paper by December 1st. So, and just the type of stuff that our audit firm does is we follow the state auditor's audit program, their suggested procedures. We'd like to use that just to make sure we catch that code compliance. Because besides just auditing, you look at your cash, and receipts and dispersments, a payroll. We'll look at your utility bills, just kind of take a sample to see if they're getting the right proper billing, if there's, you're supposed to get, charge somebody $12 per 1,000 gallons, and make sure that's what's, you know, being charged to the customer, that traces through to what the meter reading is. We'll look at your payroll to see if your authorized salary is $40,000 a year, that's what the person's getting paid. We'll look at a sample of paid bills to see if you have backup invoice, if it's coded to the right account, if you publish that in the paper, you know, if it's approved by the council. And we look for like a public purpose to see if that's, we think that's for city business. We look at receipts, we confirm some receipts with the county treasurer, some large receipts. The state of Iowa sends us a listing of all their payments that they made to you guys. And that's the type of stuff we do, plus the code compliance. We also look to make sure you publish your minutes in the paper, did you publish them timely? Did you publish the wages in the paper? Did you take bids on things you're supposed to? Did your close sessions help properly? So, and that's why we like to use the state auditor's sample because they have all the code compliance in there. So that's a synopsis of what, you know, we've done. And your book, and your persons out here, they're very accommodating, you know, any, anything I need, you know, get help pulled out. No one's like, I get a good feeling that we're all working together just to make sure everything looks okay. And so this year I did have a couple, we did do, I was in two journal entries. We had one receipt, talked about the confirmations when the receipts went through. I forget which way it went, but one of the road use accident got put in as local option or vice versa, I can't remember which way. They both come in like, you know, electronic, you know, transfers, so Sandy will fix that going in the next fiscal year, so. And then the other thing we recommended was sewer, I'll talk about sewer when I get to the, it doesn't surprise, but the sewer didn't have enough money to pay the debt when it was due. And so I recommended to transfer all the money sewer's supposed to, pay for into the debt service. And so sewer ends up to be a deficit balance as of June 30th. But since it's sewer revenue bond, he needs to get paid out of the sewer, you know, account, not the debt service fund. So that was the only couple of suggestions I had. So I didn't think that was anything major, and Adam said you guys were aware of the sewer and needed rates to be raised anyway.
Since you and I met, we've raised our rates.
So at least I'm not bringing any surprises. If there was a surprise, you probably would have, you know, known by now, so.
Right.
And then I'm just gonna go through a couple highlights in some of the numbers. And I'm just gonna go to, first I was gonna, maybe I'll skip two pages, 17 and 18. And there, that's when I was talking about the sewer. You can see the sewer had, you know, regular charges of $400,000 and regular, just your operating dispersments of 300. Then there's some governmental receipts, you know, some CDBG money to help pay for some of that capital outlay. And then under debt service was like the, one of the interest payments. And then under the transfers, that's the first principal payment and the second interest payment. So then you can see that for the year, the sewer was $160,000 in the negative. And so just, and with your bond, the way the bond resolutions work is you're supposed to have a net profit under, where it shows 122,000 excess of receipts. That's supposed to be enough to pay for 110% of the sewer. So I just wanted to point that out, so. And I know you've gone through that, and I'll go back to page 12 and 13. And that just shows the overall picture of the city. 12 and 13. In the bottom right-hand corner, it shows your total cash on hand was $1.8 million at the end of, because of June 30th or 13th. And that sounds like, you know, a lot of money, but you look at your total expenses for the year under page 12 was 4.3 million. So that's just about three, four months of expenses. And I don't know if some of you are new, have been to training, but a lot of the money is restricted, you know? Even though there's a million, 1.8 million, it's restricted for certain things. For some, it can only be used for road use, only for employee benefits, you know? So a lot of council, when they first start, they just, you know, understand that even though there's that much cash, that there's, you know, restrictions available. And I think your report's kind of showing you your cash balance by funding you get on a monthly basis, as it's only so.
That 1.8 million then includes the money that was transferred from IDOT.
Yes.
So that's actually close to half a million dollars. I mean, effectively, it's close to half a million dollars less.
It's closer to 1.3, 1.435.
Yeah. And then you see, if you go up to, just a little bit higher on the page, under governmental activities, the governmental income went up 400,000 for the year. So you took in more receipts than dispersments of 400,000, and that's because that IDOT money's in there.
Which is no, no longer there.
Right. So then I was going to skip to the back, page 47, because that's where our comments is. And then I'll go through that, and if there's anything else you want me to go back earlier in the book that I read.
This is kind of the synopsis of?
Yeah, this is the synopsis of any recommendations we had, so. And otherwise, the books that you see on a monthly basis should match, you know, the numbers I have in here, with the exception of those two, you know, entries I told you about. And I usually have a comment on like segregation duties, and it's just hard to have a complete segregation, because you have, you'd almost have to have one more person coming in, because the person reconciling the bank really shouldn't be doing the payroll or doing any receipts of, you know, of any kind. And you have Dee's doing like the billing, you know, for all the utilities, and she posts all the receipts, you know, so you should have, you know, both sides of that separate. But, you know, she's just so efficient at it, it's, you know, she does a good job. And I follow through and double check to make sure there's a reconciliation of utilities done. What that is, is you take like your beginning balances of one month, add the receipts, subtract the dispersments, and that should equal the ending balance. And then that way, you can see if there's any adjustments, you know, like the gentleman today had an adjustment, so that should show up on that reconciliation. So then you can see, that's supposedly a double, that's a double check to help you, you know, double check, you know, for the segregation duties and make sure all the money's hitting the books and getting the accounting system. And I think your system works pretty good, because you can tell when somebody's billed, they paid cash, you know, because that's the things you always kind of look for, is the cash. You get a check, you know, you have a receipt. But you can tell on your utility billing that if you pay for cash in your utility bill, it shows up there cash, and so you can tell. And then the second one is, I've had this from year to year too, this is called preparation of financial statements, which basically this is putting this book together. As far as the auditing standards go, is that Adam and Sandy's supposed to have this whole audit book all together with all the footnotes and disclosures, and I'm just supposed to come in and review the, you know, the numbers and then just put any comments on there. So your city is elected to have us put it together, probably for the last like 20 years. But I'm supposed to, you know, comment on it, so. And I don't have any other, the cities I audit or the school districts we audit, put their own financial statements together. It might be possible in a bigger city, they might have, you know, someone on staff, yeah, who just does that, so. It's common. And then the next few pages is what we call the statutory comments, where I look at, see if you're compliant with the Code of Iowa. And some of the comments, we comment on whether or not there's any problems. So I commented on the budget. We weren't over the budget, I didn't see any of the ordinary dispersments, I didn't think were covered purpose or travel expenses. I was at a meeting last night where the exes of school, somebody had sent, for like several years, they'd sent their six or seven teachers to San Diego for training for a year or so, they thought maybe they should question that, so. So I didn't really see anything like that here, but you know, if I saw something like a, you know, I see a, we look at the, you know, any credit card charges, or if I see anything called plane fare to Barbados or something, I might, I mean, that's, that's a little.
If we can do that, I want to go.
Well, that's the kind of stuff you're looking for. You know, more realistically, is if you're traveling, you look for the mileage, you know, as a state, federal mileage, that you're not taking like, how many people, you know, in a motel room, or extravagant meals, be the more practical information. So we do kind of look at some of that stuff. And then the only suggestions we had, start on page 49, is, this one I alluded to before is because the sewer's in the hole, it didn't meet the dining scenes in your revenue bond. And then the insurance levy, this is one I bought up last year, but it takes a while to implement because your budget's so far ahead. You just finished your budgeting, you know, where you had your different levies for your general fund, employee benefits, you know, debt service. And this is like a couple years ago, you have, you can levy for all the insurance, employee benefits for, this is, actually, this is the tort levy right here. You can levy for the property insurance and the general fund. You're not supposed to levy for any enterprise fund, like in water and sewer, because they're supposed to cover their own. And the last couple of years has been more property taxes levy than the actual expenses. So I was recommending that you could look at that, see maybe you can lower that.
And we took steps right at the last minute for an extra budget.
Yeah. And so like, I know it's a year ago, but then the budget was already done, so it's followed, followed up.
Right.
And the last thing, this is just kind of, kind of a different fluke, is that this happens every so, you know, you enter into a capital lease to buy a tractor, because you'd be, I think you'd be, you're proacting, you don't have so much cash, or you just want to spend so much money each year. But realistically, you're incurring debt, so it's like you're having like a GO bond or revenue bond, so you should have had a public hearing to go with the capital lease. So there's not much you can do about it now, because it's done. But next time, just keep that in mind if you wanted to, because I've had some cities, they might lease a police car, you know, for three years or?
We actually did that this year, so we'll be dealing with that one again next year, but.
Okay. But you don't think about it, because it's actually debt, and I looked up whatever code section it was in the Code of Iowa, and it did say there is equipment lease, so.
We did that late last year, so we'll have it again. Well, if we don't get it in our heads this time, we'll get it in next time.
So I don't think that's anything serious, but it's just something, you know, to find out.
Be aware of.
And you don't have to, if you go and just write a check for this big tractor, that's not a big deal. You can just, you know, write a hundred, whatever, a hundred and some thousand dollars, but if you pay for it over five years, you got a public hearing.
Okay. Ignorance, I think, on the part of?
I don't think there's, like I said, nothing would happen or anything like that, so. So that's what I have to report on. Is there anything else you want me to go back over, any numbers? Sandy, Adam, anything else you want me to highlight?
I guess as one of the new council members, whom you referred, looking, you know, what would you say would be perhaps the three greatest fiscal strengths that the city has? And what would be the three, if you were a new council member in SAC City, what would you try and build on, and what would be the three areas that you might try and really shore up for future fiscal solvency of the city?
Well, yeah, always are gonna have a little trouble with the general fund, you know, I think, because the general fund's tax levy is limited.
Right.
It's just stuck at $8.10, and it's been there since, since I've been auditing.
And a little extra 27 cents if you really have to.
Yeah. You know, so then, so that's something, that's one, that's something that every city, I think, has to pay, you know, pay attention to. I think you've got, you're lucky you've got like local option sales tax, you know, that can help pay for extra projects, but you can't afford otherwise. You have continuation, you know, on your accounting personnel, and I think that's a plus, because I've been to places where you switch accounting personnel, and they don't know how to write down the bank account, and you can't, don't know what you got. And then, and you got, you're lucky, I think you have a gas, which makes a little bit more profit than running sewer, so you have like a little excess, extra funding there that prepares the cost of that. That's what I got off the top of.
I noticed in glancing through this, you're talking, I'm not gonna call up the page here, but when you're listing the city enterprises, there wasn't a list of sanitaries, of storm sewer, garbage, are those?
Those are, she rolls them into non-major. If you look, there'll be a page for non-major.
Yeah, go back on page 38. And the reason it's set up this way, it's a recommended audit reporting by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. You want the major funds up in the front, because those are the ones we're supposed to spend more time on. And then the ones that are non-major in the back, maybe spend a little less time on that. And probably a little more audit procedures on the major funds. The same thing with like the governmental funds, like you'll see on page 36 and 37, there's like your revolving loan fund, the libraries of capital improvements, airport improvements, and they're not like in the front.
So what percentage of the general, annual general fund budget would you suggest being held over from year to year, if you're talking about a rollover, in an ideal situation?
Ideal, probably, ideal would be, I would think, like 10% or? And then it's, yeah, in some of the places, that's ideal, but you don't want to hold over too much, because then everybody's thinking you have too much property, you know, assess people too much money, but.
I know, this is a strongly debated issue in governmental bodies. Some people will tell you 7% is enough, other people will tell you 35% is not enough. It is definitely a formula that is debated heavily, and I saw that happening down, out in Washington State, too. They were fighting over that.
I've got some cities that, you know, they got some capital projects coming up, you know, they like to, they just set aside some funds each year, and some transfer some money and say, hey, we're setting this aside, you know, this is for this project only. So I've seen some cities kind of do that to help manage their, you know, their cash they have in hand, so you wouldn't have to borrow as much if something, if you want to, you know, like you had the capital lease, you wouldn't have to, you know, so I've seen cities do that, some cities might do that to help.
Typically, Jerry, you tell us that you would like the council to take some action to accept the audit? I know that's been in the past.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the audit?
I would move to accept the audit.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the audit. Sandy, would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Rooney?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And you see, if you think anything during the year, write that front pages or a letter heads on it, name, address, phone numbers, it's all emails in there, so think anything else. Then our procedures after tonight, then, is we send a couple copies to the state auditor's office. And so they have a couple copies, and I send them a PDF copy, and they'll put it on their website. So then you can go online to the state auditor's office and look at your audits, or if there's another city you want to look at, their audit, their audit should be out, up on their website also. If you want to look at any, they also have all the special examinations, if you've heard of any fraud going on, they have all that, all those reports written up on the state website, too, so. So that might kind of give you some ideas, if I look at what other cities have for cash or something, you can go on the website and kind of see them.
It appeared, I mean, obviously, we've had some decrease in our cash carryover. We're trying to obviously improve that situation. Do you think that is a wise move?
Yes. Especially because of the property tax rollbacks coming forward.
Jerry, we appreciate you always coming and making your report to our council. Thank you for your travel time.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Before you leave, could I make a request? You know, like I, we received a copy of this late this afternoon, I really didn't have much chance to go over it. Is there any possibility we could get your report, let's say, a little bit further in advance?
Normally, I do.
Okay.
This was just an unusual year, because usually I try to get it before the council so you have, you know, time to review it, right before, at least before the, and you sat, somebody at my office quit right before.
Okay, I can appreciate that.
And there were some outstanding things you were asking of us that we were.
I just got behind this. But normally, I'm a little better at that.
Okay, thank you.
And if you find something else, just let me, just give me a call, just, I'll go through. Okay?
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Have a safe travels home.
I will, no problem tonight.
Nope, you should have clean sailing.
No, no, no hurry, no snow, no. All right.
Okay. Adam, do you want to move on to six miscellaneous C discussion on Highway 20 transition opportunities?
Yeah, hopefully my screen's going to come off. Oh, I guess I could hit the source.
He was like, I brought you 10 books, I think I'll get 10 books all the way to get her, so. Thank you very much. If you need more, just let me know.
Okay. Source come up here in a second.
After the last council meeting, there was a meeting of our Highway 20 Transition Committee. And then again, this afternoon, there was a meeting in my office with the members discussing the prospects of renewing and revisiting the potential to develop an urban development area in conjunction with the county, particularly pertaining to the north corridor of Highway 20 above SAC City. What we kind of wanted to do a little bit tonight was just briefly discuss about what was previously presented, because I know there's new council members in place since the last time this was reviewed, and then go over a little bit about what's being proposed tonight, and I'll probably let Councilman Branny and Perry talk about that a little bit. Primarily, what happened is back in January of 1910, eh, 1910, of 2010. and ten, um, the, uh, city set up a committee to look at what was going on with Highway Twenty, because we knew that the prospects of the new road were coming through, and we wanted to have some way of reviewing and addressing that issue. Initially, the discussions were all over the place, we discussed annexation, we discussed urban development areas, we wanted to exhaust and review all of our potential options. What came out of that discussion at that time was a proposed plan to present to the council the idea of developing a joint urban development area that would, uh, take into consideration the two-mile area around Sac City, where Sac City has utility rights. Generically, the way that the state is set up is that a municipality that has water or gas or sewer has the rights of utility services, first right of utility services within two miles of town. And so what we were looking at is with Highway Twenty coming into place, there would be the potential for development up, particularly up around Highway Twenty. And the idea was, is that any of the utilities that would be developed up there, the city would likely want to be a partner in, with. And so the discussion was, that would include the potential for negotiating for water rights, sewer rights, arguably storm sewer rights, uh, fire protection, of course, is almost a given in these type of scenarios. You could even negotiate police protection, but I, I doubt there would be much more than, you know, they, the sheriff's department has theirs, police department has ours, I very much doubt there'd be any type of negotiation there, but it's an option. Um, and then, of course, natural gas would be a consideration factor there, along with other things. Um, road construction, for instance, or even, um, one of the things you'll see in the agreement is why it isn't necessarily a major contender in most of these issues. You can actually use those development areas for the purposes of property acquisition, if it is necessary to do so, or even, um, uh, building a facility. The example I gave this afternoon was, for instance, um, I believe it was Bass Pro Shop down in the Des Moines area, where the way that that was set up is the, uh, urban development area had been set up, and what they wanted is they wanted to lease the building, uh, they wanted to lease the property, they wanted to build their own building. Well, the city acquired the property and used, I believe, TIF as part of the purchasing process of buying the property to repay for the property. That's kind of getting outside of the scope of really what we want to discuss or anything like that. What an urban development area does primarily is, an urban development area gives you additional economic development tools within its zone. Uh, those in, those include, and we kind of identified a couple this afternoon, one is that you have some form of a plan in place, if you have an economic development opportunity come up in that district. Uh, the example I used two weeks ago when we discussed this is if you have a business that comes in, say Walmart wants to build something out there on Highway Twenty, and uh, they come to us and say, well, what can you offer us? Well, if you don't have a plan in place, what happens? We all look around at each other and say, well, we're sure we can do something for you, what did you have in mind? The idea of having the urban development area is you have a plan in place, and show that there's always some, already some cohesive planning in place between different governmental bodies to provide any services that would normally be offered, or might extra specially be offered to that particular area to support those opportunities. So it shows a certain degree and level of planning that most of these businesses are going to want to see. It also means that usually the, uh, county has taken into consideration zoning elements within that district as well. Um, the, uh, second element that is available in those type of opportunities, and I already mentioned it, and that is TIF districts. Uh, TIF districts exist inside of urban development areas. Um, so if there was an opportunity to say, for instance, build this Walmart out there, and what they wanted is us to buy the land for them, or say they wanted us to pay, they wanted the county to pave a road for them, or they wanted the city to run water up to that location, because they specifically wanted city water, what you could do with the TIF is you could use that incremental collection to pay the bonds off to provide those services to that location. So you have somewhat, not only a plan in place, you also have an economic development tool there available to assist in paying for any of the necessary developments that might be needed to take on that opportunity. So, um, that's another positive benefit of having an urban development area in place. Um, we presented this, uh, the council reviewed this back in early two thousand and eleven, and then it was presented to the county supervisors, and from there, for the most part, it has kind of, uh, just slowly eroded and died, and hasn't gone anywhere since. And one of the discussions was, is that we internally seem to be very serious about seeing this reintroduced and, uh, reviewed for the potential of moving forward on it. And the idea was, is that the best way to start that practice again was reintroduce it to the council, and make sure everyone agrees that, uh, we need to be moving forward on this potential, uh, situation. So I'll kind of let Bruce and Bill talk a little bit, if they want, about it.
We did discuss it at SDC, too, and that, and that group is very much behind this idea, and thinks it's a very good idea to, so we can be prepared with something should an opportunity come.
After the last council meeting, Adam and Bill and Barb and I met, um, as the Highway Twenty Subcommittee, and our feeling was that, you know, what we're doing may not be working, so we need to, we need, we need to proactively do something. And what we talked about was revisiting the proposal that was there, and this afternoon we talked about perhaps expanding the area that we want just a little bit, which kind of ties in with the whole housing thing you were talking about, Barb. And then trying to come up with a coalition of people to go to the board of supervisors dealing with, uh, not, not only just the city council saying we want this, but if we could get industry, if we could get the Chamber Main Street, if we could get SAC Development, and any other organizations to buy into it first, and say, look, we have a rather broad-based support of this, and we think this would be a good endeavor, not only for SAC City, but for the county as a whole, because we're all going to benefit from this.
One of the things you, you mentioned, and there were two other elements I want to discuss, is one of the other benefits we saw of developing this would be, urban development areas have particularly, uh, have particular grant opportunities available to them that, that other areas don't. So besides from having a plan in place, and also having the potential of using the TIF tool, a third option, option there is, is it opens up the door to more grants. A perfect example of that is if we didn't have a slum and blight urban development area downtown, the facade project could never have been applied for. So there's an example where there's grant opportunities available as part of an urban development area that otherwise would not be available. Um, and then one other thing you touched on is, is we focus pretty heavily on the industrial and commercial aspects of this project, of this urban development area, but there's also some, uh, residential opportunities that would be available as a result of that area as well. They're a little bit more limited in scope, but there are advantages to it as well.
If you look at what's projected up there, you'll, the light blue is the area that was proposed, uh, nineteen, uh, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Uh, Highway Twenty actually isn't there. My suggestion would be that we would continue it at least another mile, which would keep us within the two, the two-mile area, because we have this cool area along the river here. It could be really, a, a possibility for residential development.
Could I interrupt, just as, anyone in the, uh, you know, the seating back here, if you'd like to come forward and look at our map that we have here in Curtis, if you'd want to come up?
Yeah.
So that they can see what we're talking about as far as the map of where we're projecting of going, so if you want to, come right up here where you can see that, that's, you're certainly welcome.
But we're, uh, we're limited to two miles, and apparently this is a two-mile radius here. We can't really go all the way, two miles this way, and still hit Highway Twenty, because Highway Twenty does this, where it curves. But we could go another mile out here, and at least encompass this river area, and a little bit of where the highway begins to curve, and expand it, so we'd also go then to the west, to the north and the west of, of the city, as well as just looking like we're only encouraging economic development if you are living on the north and the east side of Sac City.
Yeah, so essentially, it'd be Quincy Avenue to the west, which is the old Farm Service, that'd be to the west on Highway Twenty, to north, to what, Two Hundred and Thirtyeth Street, which is, you know, Highway Twenty.
New Highway Twenty.
The new Highway Twenty, and then up over to, uh, what is it?
Just past one ninety-six.
One ninety-six, and then of course...
Or Union, if you want to call it.
Oh, and one, good, anything more on the...
Well, I think, you know, I guess, but what we want to make sure is that everybody knows what's happening, and before we really begin trying to develop a coalition to go to the supervisors, we would really like to make sure that the council is on board with this, too. So then, you know...
You're opening up opportunities without spending a lot of money, a lot of money that may not ever be used, you know, they talk about building buildings, and, well, what if nobody ever comes to, but this way you can have a plan to show that you're ready to assist someone, if they are interested.
So we have, by doing this, we would have the rights to run city water, city sewer, clear out as far as Farm Service area, at least, and is that what you're saying or not?
Not, not officially. W- what you would have is a plan in place that if an economic opportunity presented itself, and the county and the city wanted to establish something to sort, support that, then we could. And we'd have a means of which to fund that project as well.
But we'd have the first opportunity to do that.
Yes, we'd have the first opportunity.
If we don't have this area established, then we don't...
We'd have to go through all those steps before we would be able to do that.
Right, it's sort of like...
It's only going to be a way to make our town grow.
It's be, like, it's like, it's like beginning to learn to dance with another partner before the wedding, and, um, I think it offers significant opportunities for us, and I think it also maybe sends a message to the community and to potential people who would like to be here, that we are really wanting, wanting to grow. And if we look at the Highway Twenty corridor, I mean, it's, there's growth happening in other counties. And I think that what we're doing, obviously, sitting here saying we have Highway Twenty as an asset without actively promoting it, is not a good thing.
Some, I think something that ties into this was a meeting I went to today, offered by the chamber, and it was about the leakage in our county, and it was about our population, it was about one of, the, one of the greatest, um, what should I call it? Things that they're concerned, greatest concern is housing. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't write it down, where there are not a hundred and forty-seven houses that were either vacant or not lived in, or...
Undessentially housed.
Properties, spaces, living spaces.
Living spaces.
It could be an apartment, it could be a second story, and seventy-four of those were, they didn't...
They didn't know why.
Why, yeah, yeah, if anybody lived in them, or if they didn't, but one of the major concerns in the community was housing. So, and it was a really good report, and what I think I will do is ask Brandy if she would like to come to the council meeting and just give kind of a synopsis of what...
That'd be great.
Because there were really interesting things there, and they've brought up some things that really need to be checked into as far as the money that we're collecting from sales tax and things, if it's outside of our city, are we getting that, or is it, and the people don't own, the people that own it don't live here? Is that jurisdiction getting the money, or are we getting any of the money from that, that taxation? There's some real good questions that came up today. Larry?
Off of that, what you just said, whatever meaning is, is there people wanting to rent, and they have no place to rent, is that, that's part of the bottom line?
That's part of it. There's a lot of, there's a lot of homes where maybe someone died, and the family doesn't want to part with the house, so nobody's living in it, and they're just paying the taxes, and it's sitting empty. Really, that's not a good thing for our community. It's not bringing in anybody to buy groceries or services or anything else in our community. So there was some really good information shared at that meeting.
And the biggest thing is, too, that Jim said, is housing begins a lot of other things. You know, instead of, you know, in the eighties and nineties, we beat the drum about we need jobs, 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 jobs. Well, if you don't have a place for these people to live, spend their money, and things like that, we wouldn't get our jobs, because jobs really don't reap the benefit, it's the housing.
And as he said, it's not that they're going to even work in your town, it's that they might want to live here and drive thirty miles to a job, because they like the way of life here, but we don't have, there are houses, but a lot of them are not really in shape for anybody to live in, a lot of them are not attainable, um, so I think that's an area, too, that needs some concentration. I guess I just bring that up, because I think it all ties together.
And he did talk about, too, there is another way to go about these dilapidated properties.
Right, there, yeah, there's a new, um, there's some new legislation that there is some help, grants available, and whatever.
Just along that same vein, when we were at the Iowa League of Cities meeting in, in Dubuque, there was a, a class on dealing with derelict buildings, and there is a lady in, that gave a presentation, that's, I believe, from Marion, and she has a real organized way of approaching this, and I do have the outline of that, and I think if we could incorporate some of that, perhaps with P and Z.
Yeah, share it with P and Z.
And, uh, you know, to use that as an approach, and really to approach these building and, and property owners, because they actually steal, and I contend this, that they steal from the adjoining landowners, because it decreases the value of anything around it. If you had to own a, a nice property or home, you have a, one or two dilapidated buildings around it, your property is worth quite, quite a bit less, so it is a, a taking of sorts, just, just from that, uh, so I, I think I agree with Barb and your presenter, that this is something that really needs to be a priority.
That was just one piece of the information, there was a lot of really good information. Adam, do you want this in any form of a motion, or what, how do you want to move forward with it?
Barb, I had a quick question. I thought the city had the right to go out two miles without the county approval. If we wanted to go out past the two miles, then we need the supervisor's approval to include that property.
Let me answer that a different way.
Okay.
Because once you get past the two-mile mark, it gets messy.
Well, that's, that's why you need the county, if you want to go past the two miles.
Well, and they're not the only player there, the other utility partners are as well, like, uh, you would be running into real water, um, they have a contractual, um, allowance outside of two miles, so we would be infringing upon their right within that area. So the county's not the only partner outside two miles. But the idea here is, to answer your question more specifically, um, does the city, i- is there rules in place at the state level that the city could establish an urban development area within two miles of their city limits? Yes, there is procedures in place for that. Uh, I, I think the, the point that we've tried to make throughout this process is, is it's much better for the parties to work together and to share together and benefit together, rather than it is to try to, um, to establish one of these, um, areas by yourself.
Yeah, one, one comment, too, back in two thousand and ten, when we were looking at this, uh, one of the options considered was annexation, and none of the, and, and primarily, we were looking east of town, the businesses out there, none of them were in favor, but, and the cost of annexation was going to be excessive, there just really wasn't that much support for it, so I just want to make clear that this is not an annexation process, and it was decided against it then, and that still holds, so that's not even one of the considerations, because you have to have the businesses out there in favor, but which they are not, and so we have no intense, intentions of, at least the committee doesn't, of even suggesting annexation, so I'm just defining what it is now.
I guess, you know, what, maybe, I guess, speaking for Bill, and maybe not speaking for Bill, I'm speaking for myself, maybe one of the intent was if we could get a, a motion approving, going on, to establish, you know, to, to establish the coalition to approach the supervisors and, and reinvigorate some energy into the project, would be maybe what we were hoping for from the council this evening.
I would say just a motion of support.
A motion to proceed.
Yes, yes.
I would make a motion that we proceed forward with, uh, transition opportunities for Highway Twenty.
Does that second for that motion?
I have it seconded.
You have it seconded.
Okay. Questions? Okay, motion has been made and seconded to move forward with looking into the option of develop, of developing an urban development...
Area.
Area. Would you call for a vote, Sandy?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Brunie?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to six miscellaneous D, which is a second reading of ordinance number two thousand and fourteen dash two fifty-five, entitled in ordinance authorizing the vacation and sale of the East West Alley lying within block forty-two between lots two through nine, and Platts addition of Sac City, Sac County, Iowa.
This is the same one on the north end of town?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is this something that after we do this, would you want to read, or read?
If it's a property, you know, who knows what might come forward? You know, you never know, so, just to follow the procedures, if there's anyone that has it... So, just to follow the procedures, if there's anyone that has any questions about it or objects to it down the road, we follow.
I would move the second reading of ordinance number 214-255 entitled in ordinance authorizing the vacation and sale of the East West Alley lying within Block 42 between lots two through nine in Platts addition of Sac City, Sac County, Iowa.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2014-255, an ordinance authorizing the vacation and sale of the East West Alley lying within Block 42 between lots two through nine in Platts addition of Sac City, Sac County, Iowa. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Bruni? Yes. Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Six miscellaneous E is consideration of setting spring up clean, spring cleanup fees. And that list was in your packet. And they're suggesting the fee is $20, just to have them stop by and pick up trash. And any appliance is $35 per unit. And the items that we would not pick up would be hazardous waste, batteries, tires, broken glass, and concrete block.
The changes to the appliance list, we, last year we did not pick up TVs and computer monitors because they tend to be rather costly items to dispose of. The feeling was is that there was a lot of them out there that they're wanting to get rid of. And the feeling was is by mixing and matching the fees and services that we could continue to support, bring them back into the system. So, that, we did propose adding TVs and computer monitors back into the system. We would propose that the appliance stickers continue to be non-refundable as they have been in the past because that's been a major issue.
Yes.
Because people can buy and take them, some people-
Right. And of course, then we have to police that process and we don't want to get into the policing process.
The change you take.
I know, just from listening to the Wallex City Council meeting, they are taking TVs and computer monitors they share.
Because otherwise you find them somewhere.
Yeah, and that was the filling.
Where you don't want them.
We were finding more in the last year showing up in dumpsters and things of that nature than we had in years past, so the- So, the feeling was is that if we give them an avenue to dispose of them at least once a year.
Are you ready to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to set the spring cleanup fees for $20 program fee and appliance is $35 per unit.
Does it second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the program fee at $20 and the appliance fee at $35 per unit, non-refundable. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Thank you. Six miscellaneous F is opening and review of fuel bids for the city operations and possible award. How many do you have, Sandy?
One.
One bid?
We don't normally have more, we normally have two. And of course now it's, yeah, I don't know if they didn't get the letter or what.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Larson Oil. And- The bid margin on all fuels is .149.
Do you remember what it currently is, Sandy?
No, I could go check.
I'm thinking it's like 1.2, .12 or something like that.
Do you want me to check?
Yes, please.
Do you need me?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Do you have to accept this bid?
Not if we're not happy with it.
So, where did people find out about this?
We mail the letters out on an annual basis. Typically, we have three people that we know would be considering services to us. We post it, of course, publicly, but we also send three letters out to the previous bidders and-
Do we know that that person is still in business that we always had?
Both of them are still in business that-
That we currently have and have had in the past?
Yes, yeah. We've had back and forth a little bit of those. Larson provided us services a year ago. Our current provider is a company called Star Energy.
Is Al's Corner supplying that?
There, they are, are you talking who?
Al's Corner.
Out of Brita?
I think there's, there's a third one that it always wants us to send them the information but has yet to bid on the service before.
They come this direction, I see them all the time.
Yeah, there, it has to do, what they've told us in the past is they don't have the equipment to hook into our type of service. And that, but that doesn't mean that next year they won't. So, they'd like to be able to consider, to continue to be considered so that if they do end up with the equipment at some point in the future, they could be a bidder in the process.
Do you have any idea how many gallons we actually would use in a year?
It varies. And it varies dramatically based upon the police department.
Wouldn't it be very-
Depends on how much put in Stacy's.
Can I have a electric police car?
No, but we can get bicycles, they're a lot cheaper.
You know, you're not the first council member to suggest bicycles. Councilman Frohard had some wonderful design ideas for some bicycles.
They put a cab on them.
If I were you, I'd rather ride a horse than a bike.
They're just about as expensive as a vehicle by the time you feed them their hay and food.
We're just teasing.
Did you know it's a monitors and television stuff that-
You don't have to take any of these suggestions.
Best Buy will take them, up to a 36-inch TV. And it should be noted to the people, say you load up and go somewhere.
And take them with them?
Yeah, because Best Buy do, because they recycle the gold and silver out of them.
We used to have a company here in town that did that.
Yeah.
And they, uh-
Best Buy, any of them will take up to a 36-inch TV.
Huh.
Monitors.
Wonder why it's just 36-inch?
Because that's the one that they have, I don't know.
They don't want to dispose of all the other stuff.
Yeah, but that's a nice way to get rid of it if people knew about it because I don't think anybody knows it.
Maybe put it in paper.
Well, I'll double check and make sure they still do it.
Can we be careful with advertising a specific business though?
No, not us do it. They should be doing something to let people know.
Because eventually everybody's going to travel somewhere where there's a Best Buy store.
Could we move on to G and come back to Al's?
We can, we have a collection of places.
We can, as far as I'm concerned. We are moving on to G and we'll come back to this as soon as she comes back with it. And that is consideration of July 4th, 2014 fireworks contract with J and M Displays, Inc.
We are the fiscal agent and the insurance provider for the Chautauqua-
Our computers don't work this time of night. Unleaded and number one were .11, number two were .12.
That's a big change.
Our current contract is through the end of the month. So, if-
End of this month?
Yes.
Oh boy.
And that company didn't bid us again, huh?
No, we usually bid this out during the month of March and at the end of March we usually accept bids.
What do you want to do?
I mean, we can't really turn it down if we're done at the end of March.
Sure.
Well, the only thing you can do is you can, you know, if they're full at the end of the month.
Which that's pretty typical.
The tanks last a long time. You could do it again the first of April if, in case they didn't get the letter. And I don't-
So, do we follow up to see if they could do-
Have you talked to Cory at all? They know they got the letter?
I don't know.
Okay.
He was here just a week ago, so I don't know.
Well, would you like to table this? Or can we just reject the bid?
Really, at this point, you need to do one of two things. Either you need to reject all bids and go back out for bids or you need to accept the bid. That primarily, those are the two steps you need to take at this point.
I would suggest you reject the bid.
This is no different than the cemetery that we went through last month. Or if there'll be bids.
That is, that is a- That is a risk you would take, yes. That would be an open risk.
So, effectively, we have two players. If we reject all bids, we're just hoping that we get one additional bid. That's it, isn't it?
Can we make personal phone calls to the people with some letters out too and see if-
They got the letter?
They got the letters even?
Yeah, I could try to call their number now and see if this time of night I don't know that.
Then you probably not gonna be able to show anybody there.
I don't know of an actual name person, but I would tend to reject bids and put it back out, but-
Could we?
I would be shocked they'd never not bid, but-
Could, you mean the one that did not?
Right.
Right.
Could we table it and?
I said that and he said no.
I really think tabling would be an inappropriate action.
The problem being since we have rejected late bids in the past, to get another bid from the now, we really need to, we really need to open it up and send it out again if we're going to be consistent. If we want to get another bidder, we would have to open it up and allow them to come in.
Your action of rejecting should be based upon the principle that you're not satisfied with the prices that you were providing.
We aren't.
Not the fact that you don't have certain bidders included in the-
I'm going to make a motion that we reject the bids and put it back out and open it back up to other bidders.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to reject this bid and reopen the bidding.
Well, it's kind of a crapshoot, isn't it?
Would you call for a vote, Sandy?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Can we contact Al's Corner and see if they might be?
I'd say contact all of them that you put the bids out to.
Make sure they got-
There were three that got letters. Three that got letters were, I believe, Star Energy, Larson, and Wessel Oil.
Is it Wessel or is it Al's?
Wessel.
Yeah.
So, then I'd contact Al's too.
I just had somebody today that never got their mail and that happens frequently.
Well, and that's what, and I didn't realize that early enough, so I don't know.
So, now in terms of timeframe, so when we put this bid out?
We will put it out immediately.
We're gonna have to have a special meeting to prove it all.
At our next council meeting, I mean, can we have them do back by then?
We could probably, it would be April 8th. We would probably have them do by 4:00 PM on April 8th. So, I mean, as long as we get the letters out tomorrow and notify them tomorrow, I'm sure that we could do it within that time period, yes.
And make sure the tanks are full by the end of this month.
Well, I mean, if it wasn't such a huge, I mean, it's a big difference.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Especially if you're unleaded and I think it was that, probably, it was that large, the difference between them.
Yeah.
It's close to, it's close to a 30% difference.
Okay, let's move on to six miscellaneous G.
Whoops, we're backing down. No, you're right, so you're right.
No, we're G. Consideration of July 4th, 2014 fireworks contract with J and M Displays, Inc. And this is not just for one year, it's for like three years.
Correct. And the, the relationship is, is that the Chautauquais is actually the participant party that works with J and M. We act as the, as the ensuring supporter of the event.
Shirley Phillips, still Chautauqua Days?
She is the treasurer, I understand, of the Chautauqua Days Committee. And I understand that's kind of in the process, I understand, Teresa. It's not a city entity anymore, so-
Well, the Chamber of Commerce, if we're on this, I will speak to it. We had a meeting today with the Promotions Committee. And the Promotions Committee is the one that plans it. And we were discussing this and she talked about the contract. And there's going to be some changes made to Chautauqua Days. And we are also going to do a fundraiser in hopes that if next year is an all-school reunion attached to Chautauqua Days and we are, there are young folks of our community are coming to us and saying, could we please have a carnival? So, we are going to try to do a fundraiser this year during Chautauqua Days to raise money for next year. And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. I think, and this is a three-year contract with them. And the only way we could do anything different is if we would raise more money because otherwise we can't, we don't have any more money.
The only recommendation I would have for the council is, is that it gives the address of the organization for the city at 615 West Main. That would need, that just needs to be changed to reflect the city's address.
Okay.
And I've communicated that to Candy previously.
What is the address?
Or to Brandy. It would be PO Box 37.
Okay.
The only other thing is, in that there's a 15% early signing discount. It's a three-year contract and we've stipulated that fireworks will always be on the Fourth of July.
Unlike last year.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we approve the Fourth of July fireworks contract with J and M Displays, Inc. With-
The change of address.
The change of address being made to PO Box 37.
I'll second. All right, so then, so then, I guess there's a question. So, we donate $2,000 toward this project. That doesn't mean that we're responsible for this amount?
No.
No.
We are not responsible. We are not. So, the motion has been made, has there been a second?
Yes.
Okay, would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Branny?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to H. Consideration of hiring summer laborers and you're just asking for their permission, right?
We typically have tried to hire some summer laborers and what we've usually used their services for is, one, since they're non-benefit employees, they're relatively inexpensive to have around. And we have them do things like mow or be on the back of the trash truck so we can shore up our experienced employees to provide other services for us. Kind of gives us an opportunity to get some things done we wouldn't normally be able to do.
Did we change this from last year?
Huh?
Did we change this from last year?
Change.
Minimum qualifications? Because last year our summer help was not graduated from high school yet.
Oh, no, I don't think we've changed it at all.
So, we shouldn't have been hired as summer help last year? If that's the case.
Yeah, I don't think we changed it at all.
So, do we want to change, does it have to be somebody graduating from high school? Does it?
No.
It has to be 18, I think is what the deal is.
Yeah, from an insurance perspective.
Maybe it should say that in there instead of graduated from high school. I think the one individual you're speaking of that was not. Thinking he turned, I'm thinking he turned 18. There was some, we didn't have anybody that applied basically is what perhaps probably is. I'm just saying, I- But I'm not, I don't feel that. But I know the problem is the 18, not necessarily the graduate. So, maybe we should put the minimum qualifications of-
I'd be happy to modify that to be 18.
It would work for them to be able to drive anything or- Well, there's certain equipment, I know, just by out there that we have rules, they can't do certain things. Exactly, I think it'd be motorized pretty much.
Okay, want to make a motion, someone? And, and with the addition that we changed that to age 18.
I'd make that motion that we hire summer help. The only stipulation is that they have to be a minimum of 18 years old.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to go out for hiring summer laborers with stipulation that they must be 18 years old. Of, they must be at least 18 years of age.
Yes.
To call for a vote?
Excuse me, councilperson Branny?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion Perry.
Thank you. I, as committee and department head reports, have any of you been to any meetings that you'd like to report on? Wes, have you had a P and Z meeting recently?
She's P and C.
Okay.
Yes, we've had a P and Z meeting. Just discussed some of the letters that Stacy sent out. He's going to resend, what, three of them, four? Maybe there's four, three or four you had to-
There's seven and there's a couple more, yeah, a couple more I'm gonna add.
Then we talked about a couple other buildings that are places, residence, buildings, whatever that need to be looked at. Um, what else did we talk about? Uh, Adam brought up, you brought up the, um-
Oh, the spring cleanup concept?
Spring cleanup and, yeah, how to include the yard. We talked a lot about that. Total improvement of property, uh, just the spring cleanup and getting rid of stuff, because we kind of mentioned that last month at our council meeting.
And, uh, we're going to talk with Chamber, but I haven't talked to her since I've been back.
Wanted to do a promotion about spruce up and cleanup, not just for a week, but-
Right, like a month. But we decided this year it's too late already to do it with spring cleanup. Because by the time you got the notices and stuff out, so we're going to maybe do it like the month after or whatever.
I think you need some kind of recognition for the people that actually do it.
We kind of talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about that when I was on, yeah.
We talked about tying it in with Chamber Main Street too, like Adam said.
So you guys are going to sponsor that and bring it to the council then?
Well, we thought more on behalf of Chamber Main Street.
Right, but work together with them?
Yeah, but they'd work together on the issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, anybody else been to any meetings?
Uh, sector vote, the corporation is, would be on board with working toward the urban renewal area. They're in the midst of their fund drive and, uh, make sure to thank the city for its contribution and has funded, paid their portion of the entryway signs. I think they've contributed two thousand to that, which is now back in the city's general fund, so that's good.
The Parks Department's starting to gear up for the summer a little bit. They had a meeting earlier this month. They, uh, were discussing to some detail about, uh, cleaning up for the spring, so focusing on spring cleanup at this point.
One, just one other question I had. I know that the high school is doing, uh, like their student volunteer day or something like that. Is there something that the city can do to utilize some?
Chamber, we discussed that at the Chamber meeting, when they had the Chamber meeting. Um, they talked about the pocket parks and then the four bump outs down there, having them do stuff down there like weeding, um, cleaning up the pocket parks. What else did Brandy talk about?
What about helping plant the planters? Or will it be too soon?
That we kind of, I think that was mentioned, but it was on, we almost wondered if it would be too soon.
Well, actually, they need to be like, um, dug up so that the dirt is and probably some new stuff added. They could do that.
Yeah. I know Brandy was kind of thinking about stuff for them to, so maybe there's things you think of.
When you talk about cleaning up the parks, I'm thinking, you know, picking up sticks is really kind of a, a, a good, non-motorized activity that they could do.
And that's been sent. That's been requested. I haven't heard anything back.
Oh.
I think what they do mostly in these cases, from what I've experienced in the past, you give them the ideas, they take it back to the classes and the classes choose what they want to do. And then you hear back from them then.
So who wants them to make pizzas?
Yeah, one, one thing I noticed in the, uh, the water utility, Jim had a, a comment there at the bottom. There's an issue that, and I'm just quoting from the, uh, his notes there. There's an issue that has arisen this winter that with all the leaks we have had, the city has no accurate maps, uh, causing countless hours of trying to find valves in water mains. And he believes it's time to invest in the infrastructure there. Do you know what, is he talking about having, let's say, a firm or an outside firm coming in and, and doing the mapping for us?
Primarily G I. S. Mapping is what he's referring to. Um, I, I talked a little bit about this with Councilman Perry, I believe it was, because he brought this issue up. The, uh, the county has offered with their G I. S. System that they've established, that they use called Beacon, that if the cities wanted to overlay their information, utility information into their system, they would facilitate that type of activity. Um, that, that, that would be a way to save money on the upfront, uh, software and, but the limitation there is, is whether you're going to use our manpower or you're going to hire manpower to actually go out and identify the mapping needs, you know, to go through and do that. We had our, um, our actually scale maps, many of our scale maps updated in two thousand six, two thousand seven. So, um, I, I, I'm not necessarily sure, considering our greater needs as a, you, you know, our greater C I. P. Needs, that I would argue with them that this would be, um, one of our largest needs from a financial standpoint. But, um, i- it's definitely something to keep in mind. Um, but, um, I, I, I would say that for the greatest degree, I think our maps are fairly sufficient for, for doing the job. I, I think what Jim's frustration to some degree is, and particularly pertaining to water, uh, is a great example to this, is that what the city had the habit of doing for sixty, seventy years is when they put in new water lines, they didn't take out the old water lines. So underneath the ground, you have all of these obsolete water lines in the system. And I don't think, no matter how much mapping you're going to do, you're ever going to identify all of that obsolete water line underneath the, uh, the system to know whether or not it's active or not active when you dig in. And so, um, I, I, I think it's, I, I think it's a problem. I'm not necessarily sure it's, it's worth the financial, uh, the Herculean financial cost it would take to accurately resolve the problem that's being, being pointed out here. And I'm not sure it's a major problem. I, 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 I'm not sold on the idea that it's a major problem.
In other words, you're saying perhaps part of this was a little bit of frustration at having had a lot of frozen water mains in a very short period of time and not being able to deal with it as expeditiously as they would like.
Well, and then you go digging into the ground, and Danny actually could probably address this to some degree. Then you go digging into ground and you find a water line sitting there and you're going, what the heck's this? This isn't on any of our maps. And, um, and then you spend time trying to figure out that, what it takes to shut this line off and if this line is still active or not. And that's, it, it causes quite a bit of frustration for our people. Um, but I'm not necessarily sure, once again, considering the cost it would take to identify all of those obsolete lines in the ground, that it would be, um, the best use of our limited financial resources.
So let's say they, they come across one of these lines that's not being used. Do they just note it in the map or they tear it out or?
Danny, what's your typical practice when you guys find a line under, underground that you don't have previously identified?
Well, if it's a bend and stuff, you know.
You take it out?
Yeah, well, yeah, right there, yeah.
See, and that's where-
If we think it's still alive or something, you leave it alone because you don't know what's hooked to it.
And see where this, the, a great example of, of, of common practices sometimes coming back to bite you on the bu- uh, uh, biting you on the, on the bum. A great example of that is, is that sanitary sewer line up there, that obsolete sanitary sewer line up there on Main Street for the car wash. I mean, there's an example, oh, this is obviously an old line for those old houses. Let's take it out so it's no longer here. Then you take it out and look, you just created yourself another problem. So it's, that's where I get back to my comment saying that the cost associated with correcting all of this, it probably outweighs the, uh, the necessity or need, because I think you'll cause just as many problems as trying to identify them and eliminating them as you would, um, um, identifying other needs and tackling those needs.
Going forward, if, if we abandon a line, is our practice now to take it out then?
Our practice is not to take it out. It's to identify it, mark it, and leave it.
Okay.
So they are getting marked now or before they weren't?
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Um, question. We know we've lost a lot of water this year. Two point six million gallons of water due to leaks. Well, some of our leaks are not just water main breaks. We have a lot of fire hydrants around town, I think, that need a, a little maintenance. Um, North Sixteenth Street, right north of the water tower. After church the other day, Greg and I drove by the repair that they did on Saturday. And there's frozen water coming out of that water hydrant, fire hydrant, right north of the water tower, right in front of Jack's house on the corner there. And there was another one in town I saw earlier this winter and I can't tell you where it's at right now. But there, I think we need to do some serious water or fire hydrant repair. We have major fire in this town somewhere. I think we need to look at that. Because I know a lot of them don't work right now the way it is.
One thing we've done over the last four years is we've tried to spend money on replacing about three a year. I think, do you guys currently have, what, two sitting down there that could be used? I think you, one. Uh, did you use one up, uh, up there at Aaron Street just recently? Is that what it was?
No.
No, that's where it's for.
That's where it's for.
Last summer they used the one to fix the toilet, somebody, yeah, along Bob Street.
Yeah. We, we've been trying to, they're about twenty-five hundred dollars a piece to do. And so what we've been trying to do to get on top of it is we usually try to do three or four a year, try to spend about ten thousand dollars a year, um, replacing bad hydrants that need to be updated. Bob Scheffler was particularly adamant about his disdain for Eclipse model, um, hydrants out in the system and, uh-
Well, they're the oldest ones we have in town.
Yeah.
It's the Eclipse.
I would say that if, if a car ran into that, the city shouldn't stand that cost. It should be from the insurance company. I hope you got it.
He didn't have insurance. So we did have to eat that cost? We're trying to recoup it, man.
Good luck.
The guy didn't have insurance?
Now, the last one that was ran over, we did recoup on, but.
And you take them to small claims court, you won't get anything anyway.
I don't know, just a suggestion. I know it's probably not a whole lot of water, like a water main break or something, but it's still water leaking and it's still-
Anytime we can identify and plea, i- if anyone sees anyone, we always appreciate being told because otherwise it may not always be seen. I will, uh, I'll mention to Tom that now that it, the, we've got no snow on the ground, that, uh, that if he wants to, uh, that they should go around and monitor them all and see if there's one. There's always one up at the middle school that we're always tracking because it seems to have issues.
I had somebody approach me about the tennis courts and wanting to know if they, they don't see much activity over there with people playing tennis. But what they would like to do is they would like to purchase for one end of the tennis court, a really nice basketball hoop. If the city could purchase one and make sure that the lights work because they feel like there would be a lot of basketball activity.
There's a whole basket, there's a whole basketball court up there already.
No lights.
No lights. And there's lights at the tennis court. So that was brought to my attention and maybe we can see what the cost would be and I, and discuss it. I actually told them to come to the council meeting, but they're busy people and they didn't have time and I thought I'd just bring it up, mention it.
Would you like me to share it with the park board at their meeting?
Yeah, they were-
The one at the school though does have lights.
Yeah.
And can be used. Middle school, correct, behind, behind the middle school.
We should be able to put lights on the other court though.
What?
The other basketball court up there. Why couldn't we put lights there?
I'm not, I'm just suggesting. I don't care what you do, it's just-
I would say explore, teleport, pork, pork board.
Look into it.
Two plural options. And see what would be cheaper to put, uh, basketball hoops in at the test course? Because you have to put two of those in versus one light at the-
One would be paid for. They will pay for it personally.
Okay.
Well, maybe they could use part of that money and pay for a light.
Yeah.
That's a buck two cents, very good.
Whatever, let's just look at it and address it. That's all I'm asking.
Tell the pork board to look into that, would you?
I'm sure the pork board would be happy to look.
I'm sitting here.
Carrie, look into that, would you?
Is there anything else?
Just one other thing on water mains and so on. Are we out of the darkest part?
No.
I mean, we're, we're still, still letting our things, our-
We had another one for you.
We hook them back up and they're not on top yet.
It's, uh, we've had a couple of people, I'll give them credit, they're very uncomfortable with running water. They called us and said, should we unhook it? You know, the weather's better. And we keep telling them, no, no, please don't, because the frost line is still down there. It is still a danger and any, any drop in temperature at night can still cause a freeze. We, um, I, I will say something that we probably, we don't do a lot of tooting our own horn. And, and it's something I think we should take a little bit of a moment to appreciate is that I was hearing last week at the I M. M. I. How many communities, um, that their position on these water issues has basically been that your frozen service lines are your responsibility, call a plumber. And, um, one thing that we worked diligently this season on with the frozen lines was to do everything we could to assist people in finding temporary water service during this period of time. And it, it wasn't something we had to do. Uh, we just felt in this community of our size, it made sense to provide that level of support.
There are people in the country that have been showering at their neighbors for a couple of months, so it's not just in town.
And I, I was just visiting with Jim Johnston just this past week and he said, there was a big area in, in Marshalltown that went off. And they said, in his total, well, it'll be at least six weeks before you're going to have water back. And that was it. So, you know, like you said, we need to toot our horns, you know, running, you know, water between homes and so on. We, we've kept people in water, so uh, it's been a lot of work for the, for the water department. So I, I think we need to really recognize that.
And, and the neighbors deserve credit and recognition too.
Absolutely.
Because they did not have to allow us to do that for their neighbor. So it wa- it wasn't just the city providing support for people, but it was neighbors providing support for neighbors too.
So may, maybe we can come up with some type of publicity for that or?
A thank you, just a, a thank you to the people that cooperated and to the city workers for.
And we have our work session Thursday morning at seven, is that right?
Yes. And then the only other thing is Thursday night, um, the Northwest Iowa League meeting is in Carroll. Uh, hosting on, um, their presentation's going to be on mutual cooperation between different governmental bodies and, uh, and public organization, and private organizations.
Is, is there something going on with the roof at the sewer plant?
Yes.
What's going on there?
Uh, we have had a couple of different structural engineers come in and actually take a review at it. It's, you might remember we-
Talked about it a long time ago.
We talked about it January of last year, was when, uh, we had problems that caused a problem out there at the facility. Um, we are in discussion with engineers and we are also in discussion with legal representation on that matter.
So we don't know if we're going to have to withhold the cost of that or the company that-
Legal representation.
I'd be happy to talk to you about it anytime you'd like, Teresa.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? Did you already make the motion?
No, no.
Okay, motion is made, made and seconded to adjourn. Would you call for a vote?
Counselperson Bruni?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
I'm like, yes, I said yes, everybody.
Yeah.
Look right at you.